Before it gets worse.
All right, you rolling? Okay, good. Evening, everyone. This is Monday night, April 25th, 2016, and we're opening the Board of Selectmen's meeting, calling it to order at 6:03 PM. Present are Sloughman Jones, Sloughman Pacheco, and yours truly, Paul Satic. Ally Goss taking the notes for us, ah, administrative assistant who never fails us. Okay, is there anybody recording the meeting other than?
Free cam.
Free cam, there's nobody else here. All right, um, anybody here for public discussion? Ashi pans to the audience, there's nobody here. All right. So, the first thing on the agenda is a request, I'm gonna make a request as the chairman for an executive session, but we're gonna come back into open session for seven o'clock. If we, if we're done with the executive session before that, we'll take a recess. At seven o'clock, we're gonna be meeting with the Finance Committee to go over the annual town meeting articles, review of the special town meeting articles, in case there's anything that we overlooked or wanted to change from the last time, and the overall budget. So that's the plan. So, um, under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session because in my opinion, I think that we want to discuss strategy with respect to a settlement with the Massachusetts Attorney General, and also to discuss collective bargaining with the Freetown Police Department. And in my opinion, in an open meeting, maybe detriment, have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and the litigation position of the town of Freetown.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna take a roll call vote. Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Paul Satic, yes. Okay, we are in executive session. The meeting, you ready? We had a recess, and now we're reconvening the Board of Selectmen's meeting to discuss the special town meeting articles that we worked on for the last meeting, the annual town meeting articles, and an overview of the omnibus budget. So with that, I'm gonna ask, is there any articles that anybody has that we can view on the special town meeting that we may want to look at again?
All right, I'm gonna bring the Finance Committee to order.
Just the only question I had is, on the, on the new fireman, was that based on what hours he could work, or did she have to go find out? If he could work four years?
No, we had to do impact bargaining with them, so we're gonna sit down with the Fire Chief and the President of the Fire Union and talk about which direction it should go in.
That would be important.
Right. Yeah. Because if it doesn't work, and they're not in agreement, then we can't go forward with it.
Oh, that's what, yes, that's my point.
So we'll have that before we get to the annual town meeting.
Are we all set on the special?
No, we're gonna-
Actually, actually, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring back the proposal article relative to special town meeting warrant article to see if the town will vote to transfer funds in the amount of blank for fiscal year 2016 appropriated appropriations voted at town meeting June 15th, and in Article 18, and to see the appropriate free cash in the sum of blank for a total of the purpose of funding first cost items contained in the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Freetown and the Freetown.
We didn't vote on them anyway, so we're just gonna, we'll vote on everything at the end.
Yeah, but we can, we can bring it back.
I'd like to put that back on.
Yep.
All right, no problem. I have no issues with that. Lucy, do you have any issue with that? Okay, I'll, is that your motion?
I'm actually just putting it on so we can vote at the end, including that.
So-
This one we scrapped.
You should go really quickly and just say, is everybody else?
Just in case we-
Set with everything else.
Yes.
We're all set with the property insurance, the insurance recovery, free cash for civil transportation, we took off supplement department budgets, we're okay with police wages for CBA, supplement CBA, capital stabilization, to create capital stabilization to move and supplement stabilization, right? Those are all the ones that we did. Okay.
Okay, so you guys are ready to move to the annual town meeting?
Annual town meeting.
You all set, George?
The first one is the omnibus budget. I think Kim wants to talk.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take something out of order.
That's right, there you go.
Sorry.
Um, just because we have a special guest.
Well, he's not that special.
Yeah, no.
He just drew the straw.
Yeah. His own tears are coming.
He was so quiet back there.
The Planning Board is a representative, sir.
All the way down the end, we're gonna do the wordy, the wordy articles.
Annuals.
Which article?
Annual.
Yep, this is the last, these are the non-ontary ones, so you really don't have to worry about it.
The Planning Board articles.
I'm not sure where they start.
I think they started around seventeen, yeah.
Page seventeen?
No, oh, I don't know about page, no, around thirty-seven, thirty-six.
No page numbers on there. It looks like there's no way to add that, right?
It's like, it's like three quarters back.
But they're numbered, so.
I just have the four that we have.
Yeah, that's, that's all you, yeah, those are the ones that are coming. All right, Nick is gonna talk about, uh, everybody got their hands on them?
No, actually, I'm, we're working on this.
What's the article number?
There's no article, but it's eighteen.
Given by the Planning Board.
It should be around, um, Article number eighteen. And the first one is the bylaws, Article eleven.
Okay.
It's around page, it's around page nineteen.
Yeah, they're numbered though, so.
We can start at that one, or we can start at the other one, the site plan?
I have off-street parking.
Off-street parking.
Well, the off-street parking, we worked for-
Article eleven zoning bylaws, is that the one we're talking about?
Yep.
That's the one.
Yeah, the two that we have for the zoning, uh, I'm sorry, Article eleven zoning bylaws. We worked with Circuit on that for a grant. We did the site plan review, which also came into effect with the, uh, the parking. Right now, parking, we don't really have, so we work for those two kind of continuously and together. If you have any specific questions on-
What are you talking about, parking where, for what building?
Site plan review bylaws and parking bylaws.
This is for any building?
Commercial.
We don't, we don't have anything on the books for that?
We, we do, but it's just being updated because they're, they were older. These both went to our Town Council as well, for comments.
Okay.
But I, I'm, I'm just confused, the, what we had on the, well, let me ask you, what is the difference between what we have on the bylaws and this?
Right now, what we have is kind of vague, so this kind of gets into it a little bit more explaining, more standard of a parking bylaw.
Does it, does it?
Nothing, a few things changed, such as two-bedroom houses now has two spots for a two-bedroom, one-bedroom is one and a half spots, things like that.
If we're going to an apartment complex or condominium-
Like the Piedmont area or something like that.
So, down where the station is supposed to go, or was supposed to go, in that redevelopment area, once, if that ever comes to fruition, then we're talking about buildings that would be built over there, such as the condos or whatever.
Correct. So condos and commercials building, this doesn't affect housing residential.
Okay.
Doesn't affect residence.
Okay.
And that's the same thing with, so that's site plan review, which right now, for Planning Board, we don't really have a site plan review application. We use our special permit, so this sets it apart from that.
All right, so for instance, um, on South Main Street, where Kathy's used to be, and that parking was so close to the end of the road, it was-
Right, so that won't happen now.
So that wouldn't happen anymore. Now you would have to have a certain setback in how many space, okay.
Yep. It'll define what a space is, the size of space. Exactly, the size of spaces, the distance away.
Okay.
So, so commercially, if you, if you had a business town, let's say, next to the post office, for example, and the park was close to the street of your grandfather.
That's correct. So this will not affect any existing-
This is new construction.
That's correct.
Or addition, anything that adds new, if you put a change of use, that kind of thing.
Or any change of use would always have to go back to site plan review.
The couts would kick in for this.
Right. So this affects most, mostly the industrial area and planned mixed-use development.
I'm good with that.
We have two more. Which one? Uh, we can do definitions or a table of use, doesn't matter, which one do you have in front of you?
Right now, I've got the table, the table of use.
Table of use, this was just missed out on, for the zoning districts, we're just adding landfill being, no, throughout the board, not in town. Most towns are doing this nowadays, anyway, they're getting away from landfills, so we're just trying to stay calm.
Right.
That's the one.
Okay.
Can we cast your question? On these articles, and there's a lot of paper here, here is, here are the articles by number, but when you get this pile of paper here, none of these are numbered, so it's kind of hard to find them.
We don't number them until the end because-
We don't know, we're gonna take out.
We don't know what we're gonna take out. That's why they all have number one on.
So once we go through all these articles, and we take them out, then we can number them, and we'll know. But usually, the verbiage articles, articles from the Planning Board, usually they're saved for October, not right now, but usually they're at the very end.
So are you withdrawing the articles until October?
I am not, no.
I just wanted to put an emphasis on that, okay.
And the first two have been to Town Council, the second through, no, because of, it's really, that doesn't affect much.
She's chastising you.
I know.
You're saying that off-street parking and loading requirements have gone to Town Council?
Site plan review and off-street-
Yeah, that's correct. Those two have gone to Town Council with some-
Allowing reduction, you're talking about?
I'm sorry?
This one here, allowing reduction, it says?
No, you can, you can go over to the next one here, I think.
That's all I'm saying.
Which one?
We did the off-street parking, whatever.
Uh, we're going to the table of use right now. No, that's the definitions, we'll do that one next.
Something like this one.
Is there? Uh, if you keep going?
I don't know if I gotta go forward or back.
Well, this is a table of uses, that we're adding to the table of use.
That's right here?
No, we got this one exists.
I'm not sure, I put that right now.
What's the next sheet up there? Right now, we don't have landfill on the table of use, we're adding it, not to be allowed anywhere, in any district.
Okay, you have one more?
And the last one is just updating some definitions for the bylaws, which include commercial recycling, gross floor area, landfill, and parking back. Those are just common terms that are just described a little bit more in the front end of the definitions.
You guys all good?
That's all I have.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, we're all set.
Okay.
Okay.
Here we go.
All right, let's go down the line. The omnibus budget, do you want to talk about that at all right now?
Um, I just wanted to do an update.
Okay, so we have an update for the omnibus budget.
Today, you folks have a handout in the mail. I received a letter from the school district related to the transportation assessment for Old Colony. They are in a first year of a contract with a new bus provider. The assessment has come in at one hundred sixty-one thousand nine thirteen sixty, which is an increase of thirteen thousand ten dollars forty cents from the FY fifteen assessment. And actually, we had budgeted an increase to one fifty-two six twenty-five, but this will be an additional hit to the budget of nine thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Can we just review the Old Colony figure, educational figure, and the increase for that as well, please?
The educational assessment, based on a letter that was received by Mr. Healy, the total assessment to Freetown was going to one million six ninety-eight three sixty-six for ninety-two students, which would be an increase to eighteen thousand four sixty fifty per student.
Eighteen thousand dollars per student?
Would be the, if you take that one million six ninety-eight and divide it by ninety-two, that would be the new cost per student.
That would be the cost per student. And what was last year?
Last year, the cost per student was sixteen thousand three twenty-seven.
Eighteen one?
Eighteen four sixty.
Eighteen four sixty.
Eighteen four sixty.
That doesn't include transportation?
Correct.
No.
Just, just so we-
Okay, so can we review why that assessment, you got a letter, I don't have that with me, can you just go over why that assessment went up that much?
According to this letter, there are currently, out of the ninety-two students that are from Freetown, twenty-three students have IEPs, based on a school choice special education increment template that's being used, the cost of a special education student has an increase of four thousand nine sixty-six. So basically, they're saying that for the twenty-three students that have IEPs, their cost is twenty-two thousand one eighty-five. The remaining sixty-nine students have a cost of seventeen two nineteen. So they're basically saying that there's a five thousand dollar premium being paid on the assessment for those special education students.
What is an IEP?
An individual education plan. It's, they're students, students with special needs, yes. Okay, first of all, in all the years, we've never seen it calculated in this way?
We've never seen a calculation, as far as I'm aware.
Right, right. And I've never seen it jump five thousand dollars per student, ever. And secondly, when they're talking about the school choice template, are they getting, are they getting any circuit breaker money back? And if so, is that gonna ever offset the cost of our, is that gonna offset our cost? Do you know the answer?
I don't, I'm just the messenger with the letter, I have no idea.
Then, I think that, I think that we need to find out that what they're gonna get back for, circuit breaker is the following year, so this year, okay, you pay it, but next year, you get money back, like a reimbursement from the state, and it's supposed to go to offset the cost of special ed. That's how we do it in the, in the Lake, Freetown, Lakewood School District. So now, if we're gonna start to pay an additional cost for the special, special ed students, then some of that circuit breaker money should come back to us to offset some of that cost. That would, because this scenario, we've nev, we've never had a given, they said, this is the cost per student, this is what the state has increased, that was, you know, we're not part of that region, so we have to pay it, but we've, I've not seen this before. And did this just come as a letter, or was there a meeting, or?
Um, I believe that Mr. Healy met with Sarah Griffith, the business manager, on March fifteenth, and this letter is a follow-up of their meeting.
Was there circuit breaker money from last year?
Yeah, I know.
We've never, they've never, we've never talked about special needs students, it's always been like a cost per student, so.
Well, well, normally what they do is they give you a tuition figure per student, that's it. It's never been broken out, and they, certainly they, they get circuit breaker money.
I'm sure that they do get circuit breaker money, but I don't know where this school choice template is. It's not actually, it doesn't sound like it's an actual cost, it sounds like it's a template that you plug in the numbers, and you come up with some variable, and that's what you charge on top of whatever the cost per student is, and I'd like to see what that template involves.
And I'm wondering if they're getting some federal money for these special needs students.
Well, they won't get federal money, but they, they'll get, they'll get state money, and that's what the circuit breaker money is, it's state, it's state money.
How about grant money for that?
No, they won't get grant money.
How about grant money for the, for the, that region?
We put this aside till we find out.
I mean, we have, we, I don't, first of all, I don't know when this, I know you said when the meeting took place, but I would have loved to be at that meeting.
Maybe you could have Jack explain it to you.
I think what happened, I think, we had, at one of our meetings, one of the Selectmen's meetings, we asked if we had the figure for Old Colony, which we did not have, so Jack called them and met with them to come up with the figure, they actually broke it out for us for the first time. Before they gave, before they would give us just tuition, this is the tuition per student, now they went further and broke it out between the two. It'd be interesting to see if we asked them how they arrived at this stuff, if they don't come back and give us just a figure for tuition. I would think that, that's probably what they're gonna do. But, you know, we'll just have, was Ally, can you ask Jack to see if we, you want them to-
To inquire about circuit breaker money, and is the-
If it's adjusted, if we get an adjustment for it?
I'm, I'm hoping that that number there is before circuit breaker money, because I've never seen it increased again. I've never seen a number like that.
I've never seen one like that, babe.
It doesn't make any sense to me.
You know that we said ninety-two students, so.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm still confused about that, and I'm confused about the special ed. That doesn't make any sense.
This, this is per student, no? Eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars?
Well, it's twenty thousand if you include the transportation. It's twenty thousand doing a twenty- Don't, don't mix transportation in there because we have to provide the transportation anyway. To be on apples with apples, you gotta use, without the transportation provision cost.
But you can say the total cost to the taxpayer is twenty thousand.
Total cost would be very, very well.
Yeah. Because they, he just said twenty, twenty-three are the special needs students.
What's it costing a regular school?
If a patient has a patient, yeah.
Uh, six, sixty-three twenty, something like that?
A school like that?
A big difference, huh? Well, yeah, just a regular.
Slow need.
The whole idea was that special ed commands are-
I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that, so, you know, next year, when we're talking about this-
But that's all we embrace, well, to us.
We can talk about circuit breaker. If we can find out this year, if we get any circuit breaker back, we can offset the cost next year.
Do we get the circuit breaker, is that what you're saying?
No, I wanna know if we're gonna, Old Colony will get the circuit breaker, but I wanna make sure that if they do get it, then we get credited, because why are we paying?
Right.
And that amount of money on top of it, and then we, we pay full, and then they get the credit.
So, if we don't ask, shame on us. I mean, they're not gonna operate.
Probably not.
Go ahead.
But there should have been circuit breaking money before last year.
Right, but we've never seen it like this before. This is never-
This is the first time you're telling us.
Yeah.
But so right along, they've been getting-
Could be.
Most likely, yeah. Possibilities, like, all these years, they've been getting circuit breakers.
But I've never seen them use a school choice template before, and I've never seen an increase of that amount of money before.
Actually, it's, it's the increase that is relevant here. I mean, obviously, the calculations are being done differently.
Correct.
You know, take last year's numbers, what is being done differently from last year to this year, to actually-
And it would be the template that they're using.
Get an increase that, again, in order to get an increase. And I've never heard the word template when it came to regional, when it came to-
Old Colony, never.
What's just the figure?
Well, I, I've never, never seen that with the other votes either.
It'd be interesting to see what they come back with as an answer, but it's very possible that in the past years, they give us a tuition fee per student. They probably, and this is my guess, just listening to what's been going on here, they probably have done this in the past, but they just gave us the average cost per student, because you're gonna be assessed X number of dollars, you've got ninety-two students, this is what you're paying.
Well, we've always-
And my guess is that's how they're gonna come back with it.
And that could very well be, but I, we've always, we've always done extrapolation and said, okay, it's costing us X number of dollars per student, per year, and, you know, I've never seen an increase, because we do it every year, and I've never seen an increase that big for, for one year, that's what I'm saying. There's gotta be something, the calculation or the formula has had to change here, and that's what I'm, you know, and you could be right about the circuit breaker money and-
Have there been special needs in the past?
Oh, I'm sure there have, yeah.
What's the average cost now for a high school student?
Oh, I don't know.
I think it's around nine thousand. It's around nine thousand dollars, it's very close to nine thousand, either a little bit over or a little bit under, but it's right around nine thousand now.
I think it was actually, I don't know what it is right now, but the last time I heard, I remember, it was like seventy-three change, I think, before that was sixty-two.
It's up over that now.
Anything else, Kim, on this?
No, that was the only thing that's come in since our last meeting.
Okay, so let's flip the page over and go to the next article that should be in rotation. This is the article where they set the compensation for the elected officials. It should be the second one in line, Paul.
Yeah.
Has everybody got it? There, there it is.
Okay.
Are we anticipating somebody standing up at the town, do they?
Well, um-
I don't know.
I don't know the answer to that question, but I, I did have Tim from, Tim in the, in the office do a survey of the town clerks, and that figure is in line with other town clerks, so.
For the same amount of, I mean, again, you know, if you're an apples to apples head.
He did apples to apples, yeah.
And that means?
And this should be, this should be done, like, once we're done with this, this should be done, and she should be on schedule with everybody else, because it's a banter back and forth, and-
Now, Chuck, do you plan on adjusting your wages?
Nope. Overpaid as I am now, so.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that because somebody may get up there and try to cut your pay. All right, everybody good with this here?
Yeah.
What about the tree warden? Didn't we do something to get him up over to twenty-eighteen at some point?
Why?
We got a dollar an hour raise last year.
Yeah, why?
Everybody was compensated, and then, and then, so.
We, we did something, so we're starting at twenty-eighteen, is that where we're gonna stay here?
I think he's actually at twenty dollars and forty-eight cents.
That's what, that's what I remember.
That's incorrect?
I think it could be, we'll have to go to Chuck's house.
I gotta check that first, wait a minute.
Chuck, is yours rate sixty-four six? Okay.
Twenty forty-eight.
And fifty-seven cents.
That's his overpay, the fifty-seven cents.
Don't know how that's calculated. It must be the one extra day you've been on.
Yeah. It's two extra days this year. It's too extra.
Oh, that one extra day, it snuck right in there.
So, I guess, uh-
Everybody on the board all set on, we can consider that?
That twenty-eighteen may change to twenty forty-eight?
I believe it's twenty dollars and forty-eight cents, it's his current.
Okay, current is twenty forty-eight?
Yeah, so that's what department request should be, I think it's just a typo.
Finance Committee's in favor.
Okay. We're all good for that?
Okay, number three here.
This is, the next one is a housekeeping article that goes in every year for the revolving funds. Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, that's just a housekeeping article, revolving accounts?
Well, it allows them to continue into the new year.
With the existing, right, the existing accounts, everybody good with that?
Finance Committee, you're all, everybody in favor?
In favor, yes.
Okay, any-
The next one is to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of forty-five hundred dollars from the sale of cemetery lots account to be used by the Cemetery Commission for improvements to the Asona burial ground. This will include surveying of existing prepared land, marking out of lots, cleaning new areas, performing maintenance, and improving roads and access, and will take any other action relative thereto, submitted by the Cemetery Commission.
They didn't survey last year?
It's their own money. It's their own money.
No, I'm just curious, it just seems like-
I think they do it every year.
Survey every year.
Well, no, I think they, they-
Do more lots every year.
How many more lots do they have? I mean, I'm, I'm just curious, I mean-
I don't know, you'd have to ask the Cemetery Commission, there's nobody here.
I'm not, I mean, it's a non-
They don't need to be here for this.
For me, for you, it's a non-mon, a non-money.
It's their money that, that I can take it from the general fund.
It's their money that, that I can take it from the general fund.
All right, finance committee, everybody in favor?
I mean, I'm not being sarcastic when I say you gotta ask them, I mean, we would.
No, no, I, I understand, I'm not, yeah, yeah, it's not top of the pile information.
The next one?
Yes, um, go ahead, you can talk about it, but.
I'll just read it first.
Could I just, um, the next three are basically capital articles?
That's exactly my words, and they belong on the capital equipment budget, and, um, because then that way, if they're in an article, they get lost, and we never know when our, when we purchase equipment, if it's in that, if it's in that, we can track it easier, and that was exactly my words.
So, can we move?
So, we're gonna move the.
No, I'm just saying, if you, if you folks are in agreement with these three items, we could roll them into the capital budget and get rid of the article part. Just to keep that as a thought.
Okay, so you wanna read them first, to see if we wanna let them?
Go ahead, yeah.
All right, first one is to, uh, to vote to raise appropriate transfer from available funds, uh, thirty-five thousand, three twenty-three, to purchase a new skid steamer. For the highway department.
What the heck is that?
Bobcat.
That's a bobcat, oh, okay.
What, for what?
Not really, it's smaller.
What do you need that for?
It's smaller.
We use it every single day.
It's smaller than a bobcat?
Isn't it smaller?
I don't know, it must be highway survey, right, yes.
What, skid steer, no, it's the same size.
Yeah, skid steer is basically a bobcat, bobcat is just a manufacturer brand.
All right, that's, that's number one, let me read the second one, uh, to see if the town will vote appropriate or transfer from available funds, nine thousand, three thirty-six, to purchase a new lawnmower for the highway department. That's the second one, and then we can discuss these in a second, there's trucks here. The third one is to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds, thirty-six hundred dollars to purchase a scan tool for use by the highway department mechanic, or to take any other action relative thereto. All right, anybody wanna talk about, anybody have a problem with the bobcat?
Joe, you wanna talk about all three of them, so then the?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Do you, do you have a bobcat already?
We have a skid steer, yes, we do, it's a two thousand two with about twenty-two hundred hours, it's getting to the point where, um, it's fourteen years old, starting to get a little worn. Our biggest problem is parts availability, um, where it's a fourteen-year-old machine and there are no dealers. The dealers, we, we can either go to New Hampshire or Connecticut for parts. The machine that we're looking at is actually forty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars, they're gonna give us an eight thousand dollar trade-in allowance for the machine that we currently own, that was bought in two thousand two using Chaplin ninety-nine.
What make, what make is the one you have now?
New Holland.
And what are you looking at?
John Deere.
Where are you going up to Somerset, I mean, uh?
Schmidt, yeah. Schmidt has eight dealers in the area, um, we can't get the, everything else the town owns is John Deere, through the same dealership, parts availability is better than excellent. New Holland was bought from Baker Tractor, which has been out of business for the last six years, and the nearest, like I said, the nearest New Holland dealership for us is either in New Hampshire or Connecticut, so, um, we're asking, that's all. The lawnmower, um, is to replace a fifteen-year-old lawnmower that was bought by the baseball league when Central Park was first opened. We've got one that was bought by Central Park, and the other one was bought by Stop and Shop, we've got two machines that are basically fifteen-year-old. That current lawnmower, the one that I wanna replace, has about fifteen hundred hours on it, it's already on its second engine, parts availability is nil, it's, uh, like I said, fifteen-year-old lawnmower that's pretty well worn out.
Is that like a skid steer lawnmower?
It's a zero turn, yes.
Zero turn, right?
Yes.
You still have another lawnmower though, right?
We have one that the town bought three years ago.
Three years ago, yeah, okay.
For the cemetery, yes.
All right, so we still have that one, this one?
We currently mow weekly with three lawnmowers.
Okay.
Now, who's gonna own this lawnmower, the, 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 Bob for you or the, or you?
Town, free town, no, free town. That, the lawnmower is, like I said, it's nine thousand, whatever.
Is it diesel?
No, diesel, this year, the diesel, the mower that I wanted, um, John Deere nine-nine-seven, cause it has to meet the new tier four emissions, it's almost twenty thousand dollars, it's nineteen thousand and change, it's a four thousand dollar increase over last year's machine, just so it meets tier four. So, we've opted to go with, it'd be the exact same lawnmower that the town bought three years ago, the nine sixty.
Will it possibly have to cross over some of those?
Uh, yes. That's, um, again, yeah, the lawnmower that I wanna replace, like I said, was bought in the year that we built Central Park, so I think that it's fifteen years now, so, we got our money's worth out of it.
Are the two lawns the same, where you take parts from one, there's still the yellow one?
No, no, one, one, one's a lawn tractor, the, the one that Stop and Shop bought us was a diesel tractor lawnmower. This one is a zero turn, um, again, it's.
Whatever, it's, it's.
It's just.
It's dead.
It'd be nice if you could find a used diesel from last year.
Good luck, I'm looking for Hensley. So, like I said, there, there was a four thousand dollar price increase from last year's machine to this year's machine, for that tier four, so. You gotta work, use DEF on all the new lawnmowers that are diesel, it's kinda silly.
Crazy.
The world's kinda silly, in case you haven't figured that out.
How about the scan tool?
Scan tool, um, has the border select when requested, um, that's a Snap-on, uh, Solus Edge, it's thirty, thirty-five, thirty-six hundred dollars.
Then what?
Exactly, my sentiments exactly.
You're gonna get a scan tool, you're gonna get a code, then what?
That's, uh, this isn't my idea.
Well, one, one month of the, of the, we'll alternate months, one month.
Let me, no, no.
Bob will take care of the codes, next month, lease it, then I'll take care of the third month, then we'll just rotate again. Actually, it's so that, uh, at some point, uh, mechanic is, uh, has told us he's gonna be retiring?
I understand.
Okay.
Let, let me explain to you how it works. You have a scan tool, and there are all kinds of scans, there's all kinds of people, all kinds of companies, all kinds of scans tools. I have three sets of scan tools, I've got OTC, I've got Ortel, and I had Snap-on, but I threw them out of there. Snap-on's not a bad tool, it's a good tool, very expensive, you gotta pay for updates constantly, constantly, just bleeding you for updates. That is really not the problem, the problem is not getting the code out of the, out of the car. Now, you've got the code, what are you gonna do with it? You have to pay a service for the, for the interpretation of those codes. Now, you either gotta get all data, or you've gotta get a precision, or you've gotta get one of those other companies, because if, even if you have the code, it's not gonna do any good unless you can interpret it, and then look for the repairs for the car. And even with all data, uh, and I go through this on a daily basis, sometimes the diagnostic process is a factory OE diagnostic process that they give you, alls they do is copy it out of a Ford manual or a BMW manual or whatever, and they give you it, it could be twenty pages long. It could take you a year to go through all of those things for that. The repair process for ten-up vehicles, I don't care what they are, I don't care if they're trucks or lawnmowers or whatever, it's, it's all gonna be laptop, and without the specific laptop for that specific vehicle, it's gonna be, the diagnostic process is harsher, it's, it's. A scan tool is great to find out if you've got something wrong, but most cars have check engine lights or service engine lights on. When the service engine light comes on, you know you have a problem with the car, it's telling you that you've got a problem. The question is interpretation, you can get the code out of the car, it will tell you this sensor or that sensor, but is that the end of the line, no, nine times out of ten with these door cars, it's not. And, uh, Chuck, what are you gonna be using that scan tool on, mostly late model, what?
Police cruisers, I imagine, and, and the small trucks, yeah, no, nothing for the big trucks, just.
No, 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 you can't do it, but I'm just saying, you know, these, the scan tool's gonna be for probably, uh, thirteen-up vehicles? Thirteen or sixteen?
Probably twenty to twenty-five. You got, you got what, nineteen, nineteen police, oh, I'm sorry.
Years, years.
Twenty to twenty-five vehicles.
Yeah, everything is.
They constantly upgrade Snap-on, cause I have, I have the Snap-on Solus.
Yeah, you constantly have to pay to upgrade Snap-on.
Sixty-three dollars and eighteen cents a month.
Well, again, if you want the updates, then it's, it's.
Yeah, you're part of the package.
Well, it's, it's six ninety-five for, for the complete update. And if you, and it depends if you wanna go domestic or if you wanna go import.
You know what, you know what, you know what, here's the thing, we'll just take it off, okay? Because this is, this is why we put it on there, we put it on there because Chuck.
I understand.
Came to a meeting, and we talked about, we need to get a good mechanic in here, not that we don't have a good mechanic now, but, but, we wanna have, uh, you know, wanna move forward and be able to fix these vehicles ourselves, and the problem was that they didn't know how to fix the vehicles because they didn't have a scan tool. So, the board said, okay, well, you weren't here, then we'll come, we'll come forward and we'll, we'll put that on the warrant articles, and then that way you'll have the tool in case you need it, so when we go out to get another mechanic, he'll be able to have all the tools he needs to fix the car.
I'm not saying that they shouldn't have the tool, they probably should have the tool, but along with the tool, they need another tool to supplement that tool, or the original tool is not gonna do much good, that's my point.
So, the scan, this thirty-six hundred dollars is just for the tool?
That's for that, that particular scan tool.
But it's gonna, it, right, it's gonna be that way, or we're gonna have to change the way we fix our cars and send them all out.
And again, a lot of the, I'm telling you, a lot of the information out there, fourteen to sixteen?
And then there wouldn't be a need for the mechanic.
I actually don't even, uh.
The Solus will read just about every car out there, you need, you need, it comes with modules that you use to plug in to the, to the reader port, all right? The machine, again, you're gonna have, he'll have to put it in his budget, that sixty-three dollars and eighteen cents a month, all right, that's, that's what it costs me to have the machine, the, the, the reader. He comes by with a Snap-on truck, and he goes in and he updates on the computer, they're currently coming up with a way to do it on the internet, so you don't even need them. I just got a letter from Snap-on, but, um, he'll be able to, the guy will come by to make it simple, and instead, and, and in that letter, it says, your Snap-on dealer will still come by if you need it, and update your tool by plugging it into his computer in the truck.
Why don't we just take and wait until?
Right, that's what I just said, take it off.
Until, until we have our mechanic retire, and a new guy comes in.
Take it off.
So, let's take that one off, is it okay, is everybody in agreement to send the first two over to the capital budget? The one for the skid?
Yeah.
And, and the lawnmower?
I have one other question. Are there any attachments coming with the skid steer, any toys?
Just a bucket.
Just a bucket.
Okay. All right, so, that's good for the border select, we can move it on? Kim, you got that?
Finance committee, any objection to those two articles?
No.
And we can use the other one as, if you fold, if you fold the, uh, the other one, you can use it for scrap paper, a good place to write, see, clear sight.
Airplanes.
Or you can use it for airplanes.
I just have a question, I'm, when are they gonna start that bridge?
What bridge?
The one on Main Street, yeah.
National Engineering?
What? Cause I didn't, I'm being mad, buddy.
Supposed to be this summer, right now, the preliminary engineering, they, we're saving twenty-seven grand, cause we don't have to do a hydrology study. The main problem with the bridge was from the water line down, it self-healed itself, that is minimal amount of work that has to be done. Right now, they're looking at just a little bit of grunt work, that's it.
And they have to notify the Mass Historical Society before they start the tournament.
That's the engineer, that makes, they're, they do that for a living, they understand.
Okay.
The majority of our efforts.
Passing on all the questions I'm getting from other people.
They just finished fixing the wall that was hit on the bridge. They did a good job. Like that bridge is, the repairs on that bridge are gonna end up being quite minor. The real efforts are gonna be on the Locust Street Bridge.
Okay, when are you gonna start that?
Again, sometime this summer, it should be out today, hopefully within three weeks, we're waiting, we did sonar test on it last week, and then we're just waiting for the results of that on the deck.
Do you don't know if any unexpected issues at this point?
Locust Street, Locust Street could be, could be a time bomb, depending on how we get the, uh, test back from the sonar.
That's not a historical bridge, is it?
No, nineteen sixty.
Okay, Chuck, you're all, you're free to go unless you wanna stay for the festivities.
You're all set for the truck? Any issues on the truck, questions?
That was already in the capital budget, I don't know.
And I will shut up, and I will leave.
The next one is to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and or transfer from available funds the sum of thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars to fund the interim year adjustment of assessed values for two thousand and seventeen, as required by the Massachusetts General Law and the Department of Revenue. Anybody have any issues on that?
No.
We gotta do it.
Yeah, and I don't. I'll say with the next one, too.
Finance committee's all in favor?
And the next one is the, is the cost of the, um, software license?
Would this one be number seven now, since we?
There's no numbers, there's no numbers, you'll get the final numbers when it gets on the warrant.
Okay.
All right, this one is for nine thousand, nine hundred dollars, the border select, have any issues with this?
No.
The software?
The software, no.
Finance committee?
This analysis makes my taxes go up.
Well, it, it's all the other money that you spend, making taxes go up.
Well, you'll save thirty-six hundred dollars now.
See if the town will vote to raise appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of zero, no, it's blank, dollars to repair and maintain town-owned buildings, grounds and vehicles, and to take any action relative thereto. Kim, what do we have in there now? You have any idea?
I'm not sure what's left in the articles from this year.
I know, um, when we first put this on, I think we funded it at forty-five thousand, a few years ago.
I wanna say maybe twenty-five?
I thought it was forty-five.
Forty-five, yeah.
And then we put, uh, we added some last year.
I think you added twenty-five last year.
We added twenty-five last year to bring it up to forty-five, I think.
Well, but there was money that was already spent, so.
Forty-five, you spent some, you added more.
There's only four thousand left.
Okay, I, I think we need to put something in there.
Um, well, I had a conversation briefly at the end of the day with Scott, um, his recommendation was twenty-five thousand, I, I have no input from Jack, so.
All right, I'm just gonna say on the record that I think, yeah, this is just me talking personally, that's fine, again, we have asked him to put together a capital building improvement, so we know where we're spending the money, and we're not arbitrarily spending money. So, is this in conjunction with that, or is this, we still have the capital improvement list?
We do have the capital improvement list, I believe that comes to a hundred and forty-two thousand, so.
So, this is just?
This would be for repairs that come up during the year that aren't necessarily going to improve the life, um, span of, of a particular building.
Brakes they fix it.
Yes.
What happened at the police station this, this year, did they come out of the same fund, the repairing at the police station?
Some of it did, some of it came out of money that was held over from Calis.
No, this isn't emergency, this is, this is the fun, things that break.
Yeah, well, I mean, that would consider.
Yeah, the door falls off.
Yeah.
And you're gonna fix the door. Window breaks.
Yeah.
Roof leaks, uh, the heating system in the police department.
Well, there's only so far you can go on.
Yeah.
Then it didn't become a major issue, you just take it up.
The columns on the front of the town hall, when they replaced those, they had the money to do that, so.
Well, those are things that you already know that you're gonna have to do, right? So, this is like little stuff, like, okay, there's, uh, ants in the kitchen over there that needs to be taken care of, it's that kinda stuff.
That comes out of capital?
You wanna put twenty-five thousand on that?
This is not. No, that comes out of the bill.
You wanna put twenty-five thousand on that?
I don't have any problem with that, I don't know if anybody else thinks, I think that's a reasonable.
We originally started with forty-five, though.
Right, but we've, we've, we've addressed a lot of things so far.
All right, do you wanna put twenty-five, or do you want it to be twenty-five?
I think we should put twenty-five.
Put it twenty-five.
Make it twenty-nine and whatever the.
Yeah. That would be it, cause there's only four left.
Okay, okay. Everybody in agreement with that, twenty-five thousand?
Agree.
All right, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of two thousand dollars for the purpose of supporting sexual assault and domestic violence program of the Women's Center Incorporated.
Yep. Yep.
We do it every year.
We spent two thousand, I have to say we did it every year.
We did last year.
We do it every year, yeah.
We do it every year, and it, and it is, you, you can do it without an issue.
I know they brought up an issue, we discussed it at some time, it's past, yeah.
To see if the town will vote in accordance with the Mass General Law, chapter one-one-five, section nine, to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds, the sum of three hundred fifty dollars to maintain the vet, uh, veterans' graves, and it'll take any other action relative thereto.
All right, on the, on the one before that, the two thousand dollars, we all in agreement with that?
Yep.
Yeah. You know what, I don't like four hundred and fifty bucks, but I don't understand, it's different, though, you have a cemetery, there's some veteran graves in there, so what would it, what would be different about those graves than the other graves?
I think that's to put the flags on it.
They get the flags, and they're all the little things. For Memorial Day and for the Fourth of July.
But is that done by the veterans, the veterans?
Veterans does it.
We fund, we fund it.
But, because if we does it.
Yeah, I know, it does it come out of the budget.
No, no, we've always funded it that way.
All right. No, I'm just curious.
Okay, there's been a change to the next one, uh, from the water department, that's been adjusted down by fifty thousand dollars, based on a meeting this past, this past Friday, so, you see, you have the figures in front of you.
Yeah, it's been dropped to five hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars, from five thousand, uh, yeah, five hundred and fifty, one thousand, seven sixty-eight.
Is that what you're, you're so far?
The revenue, um, yeah, it's a, almost like a revolving account.
It's at the first one.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's maybe at forty-eight here.
Yeah.
Do we have something there?
Incoming revenue, does it offset this?
The incoming revenue is estimated at five hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, okay.
And then, the second one is the same type of setup, but that's-
All right, we're all in favor of that? Yep, okay.
Yeah. The next one is the sort enterprise one. As far as I know, that's accurate.
One ninety-eight, it's on four.
Everybody good on that?
See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of, for the purpose of supplementing the stabilization fund, I would recommend that you take that article and put it down at the bond.
It should be, uh-
Yeah, it should be the very last article.
It should be the last article.
The last two. One is regular stabilization, one's capital stabilization, so the last two.
Yep, the last two down below. In fact, the, 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 uh, capital one should probably go-
First, and the stabilization should go second, and then, um-
That makes sense, Kim? Capital first.
If nothing changes between now and when we're ready to go to town meeting, we'll have an estimate as to what we can put where, and then maybe we can talk about it. We can, yeah, but, just so you guys know, like, estimate, like, close to what it's gonna be, and we can talk about that before the special town meeting, 'cause we'll know more or less what it's gonna be.
The next one, the two articles, that really are placeholders at this point, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ally, but to accept the cost of drive on one article as a town road, and the extension of King Phillips Way and Jordan Lane, uh, that has-
We're gonna skip, well, the planning boards was next, we're skipping all of them.
The planning boards, we already did.
We already did.
And the reason that this is really a placeholder is because it's coming before the board of selectmen.
On Monday?
They second.
Is that Monday already?
Yeah, that's Monday already, God. Lisa, can you imagine, you're gonna be sitting with us again?
All right, so we're skipping over these?
Just the planning board one, we went into, um-
That's it.
How are you doing on the building?
Three from the back, this one here.
I don't see any more, do you? I think that's it.
This is our cost of drive, and next group.
Yeah, we're done.
I think the biggest budget item you're waiting for will be the finalization of the trash.
And the school.
What's going on with the-
I think you guys pretty much said the split of the day.
No, we already voted, well, we already gave, came to an agreement with the number with the school.
Oh, okay.
Who has?
With Lakeville.
Yeah, we-
Yeah, we haven't got the final thing yet, 'cause we don't know what the school's doing.
Doesn't matter what the school's doing.
We have our recommendation.
You have your recommendation, so if the school doesn't change your recommendation, it is what it is.
And if-
Just like any of these other budgets.